Let's see, we have Select Board members Mary Ashcroft, Joe Donardo, John Paul Fagnant, and Sharon Russell. We have our Town Administrator Bill Sweet, we have Ed Squira, Barbara Pulling from the Planning Commission, Byron Hathaway, Heath Whitcomb from the Rutland Herald, Mike Carlson, and other people are joining. Aaron Jones, Carrie Clark, and who's Brian's iPad? Mike Rowe?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, very good. So, we'll start with the orders here, so Select Board members, please stop in and sign when you have a chance to. We're just going to do the minutes and then we'll move to public comment, Ed, that would be you, in a minute. So, we have Select Board minutes from November 16th. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, move. Our move to accept.
Sharon Russell moves to accept, is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe Donardo seconds, any omissions, corrections for those minutes?
There was some reason, Mary, there was some reason we didn't approve these the last time, do you remember what it was? Something wasn't right.
It was related to the review of the police budget, and I think when we do the budgets later, I, that was-
Human information, yes.
Yes, okay. So, as the minutes stand, that was an accurate reflection of what we discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of the 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Minutes of the meeting of November 24th. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
JP moves to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Sharon moves to second. Any discussion, any corrections, deletions? If not, all in favor of accepting the minutes of the November 24th Select Board meeting, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to move from questions from the floor or public comment, and Ed Squira is joining us tonight. Ed?
Yes, sir, are you ready?
We are.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to take a minute out before I start with my summary to thank the Rutland Town Police Department for stepping up their traffic control in the Post Road area, it is appreciated by myself and some of my friends that have mentioned it. What I'd like to do is, I wrote out a summary here, I'd like to discuss with you, and I'd like to read the whole thing through, and then it could be open for questions, answers, or whatever it might take, whatever it might take. And if I can start, I'll start in right now.
Go ahead.
Okay, what I'd like to talk about to you tonight is the intersection of Post Road and Post Road Extension. Sometime between the dates of November 12th and December 2nd, a vehicle left the road and ran through my fences, causing damage to 100 feet of fence. I noticed the damage on Wednesday, December 2nd, on my way up to the recycling center. While at the recycling center, John Fagnant was there and came down to survey the damage. They apparently drove, or were towed away from my property. To date, no one has contacted me to state that they were the ones responsible for the damage. I believe Ted Washburn was checking with dispatch to see if there was, if it was reported. I haven't heard anything from Ted at this time. The winter before last, there were three accidents in the same spot. The responsible driver in the first accident did come by, with his insurance information. This is a very bad intersection. In accidents, there are an annual event, especially in the winter. Just about every winter, there's someone off the road in that location. I have talked to the Reeds, who own property above me, they are having a problem there as well, with people not stopping and driving into their yard. I believe Brian Reed is on this call himself, and after I'm finished, would like to talk to you as well. I don't know that for sure. Since no one has claimed responsibility, I will have to cover the cost to replace the fence. This area needs guardrails. It needs guardrails to prevent vehicles from leaving the road and preventing further damage. As a resident of this town for the past 40 years, I'm asking you to authorize the placement of these guardrails. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
So, I talked-
And see if Brian Reed is there?
I'm here, I'm not sure if you can hear me or not.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, Mary. I'd just like to make a short comment in regards to what Ed was talking about. In the short period of time I've been here on Post Road Extension, which is like five or six years now, we've had at least a half a dozen cars come down into our yard, leaving big ruts. The intersection is definitely a problem. People can't see the stop sign that's in Shomo's yard, because it's kind of around the corner from where you can actually see approaching the intersection, and there's no stop line on the road there. And at night especially, people don't know that they're coming to an intersection. And I think most of this is happening at night. So, there needs to be something done to warn people of the intersection, and I think I'm in agreement with Ed, that a guardrail will go a long ways in preventing all this damage.
Okay.
I have to tell you, I have to tell you, I feel remiss listening to these guys and going there with Ed that day, because I'm a little ashamed that we didn't think about this ourselves, just from a safety point of view. But, I mean, I think we need to do this yesterday.
I agree, John, I've, I've almost got clipped in that, in that intersection a couple times.
Yeah, I think we should redesign it. We should redesign it so that as Ed says, there's plenty, and the other gentleman, there's plenty of notice to folks coming west, that that's an intersection that requires you to stop.
Yep.
So, I asked Byron to also weigh in, he's road commissioner, so Byron?
Okay, you can hear me, I guess?
Yep.
Yeah, up until a number of years ago, there was always a stop sign on the opposite side of the intersection. And I don't believe we had a lot of accidents or a lot of runoff up until the time that I was advised and reprimanded by V-Trans, that that was not a proper placement of a stop sign, and that should be removed. So, I did, I removed that stop sign. And I think since then, that increase in, in runoffs of the road has probably increased. As far as the design of the road, the design of the slopes and such, there is no actual warrant for a guardrail there to warrant that. However, there is a sign, it's a large double arrow sign, it's similar to the arrow sign that's on the corner of Prospect, corner of East Pittsburgh Road and Route 7, getting near to turn that corner by Vermont Roots by the veterinary clinic. That'd be the same size as that sign, where it'd be a double arrow pointing in both directions. The manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices does allow such a sign to be placed on the opposite side of the stem on a T-intersection, to warn motorists that they need to make a right or a left. As far as the signage for, for that, that intersection, there is a stop ahead sign previous to the corner when people come around that, that's in the proper place, the stop sign is in its proper location. I would recommend that putting up the double arrow sign, as well as including the double arrow sign down at the, down at the Col River Road, Stratton Road intersection, which is a similar type of intersection. Down there, we do have guardrails, and we had a car recently take out those guardrails, and it was over $3,000 just to repair those guardrails. Guardrails are expensive, and it's cheaper to fix a barbed wire fence than it is to fix guardrails. So, my recommendation to the board, or to whoever wants to make this decision, is to put up the double arrow sign. It would be of the high intensity prismatic type sheeting, which is the current standard, and it certainly would show up very bright at night when approaching that intersection.
Why can't we do both? I would think, man, don't we start off with a sign, because that's the lesser expensive, and then when, I don't think that would warrant guardrails there. Most of the problem with people with these intersections and problems, I feel, is excessive speed and lack of paying attention, because the, the intersection is properly worn, and if you stop for that stop sign, you're going to know you can't go straight. I, I don't, I don't feel that that's the problem, I think it's excessive speed and lack of paying attention, and I, I just don't see where, you know, guardrails, you just, like Byron said, you're just gonna, you know, somebody doesn't pay attention, you're gonna have a car buried in the guardrails. But, at least you'll know who did it.
Well, I think that's-
You know, from my, oh, sorry Sharon.
But, you know what, it's unfair to the landowner, because if, if it's excessive speed and not paying attention, they're still going to end up through his fence and over into his land. And, you know, he's a taxpayer, I, I can see his point, um, you know-
But, it's more, it's even more than that, though Sharon, because if you go and look at the drop from the road to where a car's going to go, I mean, we're on notice with all these accidents, and-
I know.
Okay, so being on notice, people will look back and say, you had all these accidents, someone's going to get killed, and I'll tell you how it's going to happen. The incline, the change in elevation is so dramatic, that there's going to be a car that overturns someday, and it's going to be carrying loved ones of somebody, God forbid they be towns, but it's going to happen, and we know it, because we got notice all these accidents. So, whether that, whether that, whether that intersection qualifies from an engineering point of view, I don't know, but it certainly qualifies from a safety point of view, and putting other people first.
John, I agree with you, because it isn't, if it might happen, it has happened already. It happened, and because I know that, it was a brother-in-law of mine, and he died. So, they have done-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, that has happened, so, I agree with you. I, I, guardrails might be expensive, but human life is, if there's no, there's no amount of money that, that gives you back a human life. So, I'm in favor of the guardrails.
So, we have two different thoughts, one is to put guardrails up, one is to put the sign up, and maybe follow it with guardrails, maybe not. We don't know the cost of one versus the other. What's your pleasure, folks?
Mary, may I say something here?
Sure.
Hello? May I say something here?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say this. Yes, it does fall on the burden of the taxpayer, okay? Figuring $10 a foot in replacing, which is a low figure, in replacing my fence probably every other year, costs me a lot of money. Now, the easy thing to say is just charge it to your insurance company. But after you make so many claims to your insurance company, you don't have an insurance company anymore. Okay, so I put the bill myself. I used the figure of $10 a foot. Right there is 100 feet of fence that needs to be changed, okay? Last year, or, last year with COVID, there was some problems up there, but it was, it was insignificant. The year before, there were three accidents that went into the fence there. Okay, first of all, guardrails are made to repel off vehicles. There's a drop, as John said, of over three foot from the top of the road to the bottom of my property. Now, I'll take a little history lesson on this. There was a young fellow back about 10 years ago, that went through that intersection, he had his driver's license for three years, or three weeks, I'm sorry. He rolled over when he went off the road, and rolled over and flipped over, and luckily the three youngsters that were leaving the high school over there were buckled in their safety belts. He took down something like almost 200 feet of fence, all right? In this accident, of course, there was someone paying for it, all right? But, more than 50% of these accidents are gone, and there's no record of them. I've called Ted twice today, or, I've called Ted twice to find out if anything happened. I was away deer hunting for two weeks, so I was here every three, three or four days, I spent the night and I left. I had people watching, I, I came back to feed my cattle so that everything was okay. I, as a landowner, own almost 80 acres up there, and I also maintain the Benetatos property up there. I personally walk 100 acres of land every spring, and note every piece of fence damage that I have to take into consideration. To be perfectly honest with you, none of us are getting any younger, and I repair fences for two to three weeks a year. That fence had four rows of barbed wire on it, one, one row of solid fence wire that's electrified. It, it's just, putting in the guardrails are a small thing. If somebody does come through, they're going to hit it and repel it and stay on the road. This, if, I have pictures that I went out and took yesterday, which are above the pictures I took a few days ago. And I could actually show you these pictures, because I took pictures of cars coming to a stop there, and you can see the dramatic difference of the height of the road as it comes down to my property where I was standing taking these pictures. You know, guardrails might cost $3,000, but I, I'm a firm believer that this is nothing but an accident waiting to happen all the time. Now, as far as signage on that road, prior to the repaving of that road, there was a stop bar and a stop, and a stop sign painted on the road. There were three, okay, stop signs on that road. There was two signs alerting people that there is a stop ahead, all right? I have asked Fire Room now, a number of times, I've asked Chief Dumas twice, to ask Fire Room to paint a stop sign on the road, okay? This, I've asked Fire Room less than a month ago, once again, to do it, all right? And it still hasn't been done. I'm not, I have nothing against Fire Room, I think he's, he does a good job, I think here we need to listen to what's happening. If this is happening on an annual basis, it has to be the worst intersection in the town. And it's come to the time where I think we need to do something about it. Now, two of those stop signs were removed, Fire Room gave you an example of why one was removed, but the other one was removed too, also, the second one. The sign that you have alerting people coming to a stop is an old sign, and if you drive up to it in the night, you see a round circle, not a stop sign. It's faded, should be replaced, with a sign that has some writing on it, not just a, a stop sign up there. So, people know, and a sign that's going to be reflective, that's so people can see it. I'm really tired of having to pay to fix my fence. I mean, it takes time, and I'll tell you truthfully, I'll tell you a short story, one of the state troopers went through my fence back about five or six years ago, and I've got a call from their, their claims payment, and the woman said, Mr. Squira, I have a bill for $270 for a fence repair. She says, I never get bills for this low amount for fence repair, for someone going through a fence. I says, ma'am, it was 27 feet, I repaired the fence, so, times 10 is $270. So, I think my claim to how much cost is reasonable, the insurance company of the last person paid the price, but less than 50% of these people ever stop to give me their names and insurance companies. I am paying for this year after year out of my own pocket, and that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you, Ed. So, board, what's your pleasure?
Well, I make the motion that we clean up the stop signs, make sure that they're, they're, you know, bright and whatever, but I also move that we put guardrails in for safety issues.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to refurbish the stop signs and to install guardrails. Any further discussion? If not-
Yeah, I, Sharon, when you say, when you say refurbish, I assume you're referencing that two-way arrow that Byron City could put up?
Yep.
And the stop signs, okay.
And the stop, yeah. Yeah. You know, we have to also consider, you know, it's not only Ed's fence, there are children that walk up through there to go to the pool. So, even more important are those signs. And, and, you know, I, I think By does a great job, but, we need to get that traffic slowed down, and we need, we need to protect our taxpayers, which Ed is one, and, and our children, or anybody else walking up through there.
Okay, any further comments, or are you ready for the question? Motion is to install guardrails and stop signs, including the double arrow sign. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Anything else from public comment, members of the public who wish to be heard? All right, if not, we'll move along. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, what do you have for us tonight?
Evening. Not a lot left to go over for tonight from, from my end, from the packet. We have our updated meeting schedule, and number two is from Byron, it's a draft of a letter, he wanted you guys to have, he'll go over that in his section. Number three is our annual contract for generator maintenance with Brookfield Service, that is up for renewal.
Okay, so you're pausing right there. Is, didn't we approve this last time, or no?
Uh, I, no, we did not, this is, this is, this just came.
So, I thought we did do a two-year contract on something, do you recall what it was?
That was the town report.
Right, okay, I wasn't wrong, different, all right. Any questions about the Brookfield Service contract for the generators, or do I have a motion?
Um, if I understand the contract right, Mary, I believe that the only generator that would, twice-a-year maintenance would be for the school generator, the bigger one, and the other two would be serviced once a year, do I read that right?
That was how I saw it too, yep.
So, basically, they would do, they would show up and change the oil and service all five generators once a year, and then come back and do that, twice-a-year maintenance would be on the bigger one?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we have to make a choice between Program One or Program Two?
Yeah, I think Program Two adds the $900-plus to make the second trip over to look at the big generator.
Yep.
No, I think, what, Program One is, does not include the school.
Okay.
So, there's, it's not one or the other, it's, number one includes the complete annual service of the four smaller generators, Program Two includes the two visits, two services of the school generator, so it's about $3,320 or three, or so.
Do we have a, do we have the, what we paid for last year, do we know?
No.
Because these, these guys have been servicing the generators for years.
It was $22.42 for number one, and $8.97 for number two last year.
Okay, so this is right, I, I'd make a motion that we accept the proposal from Brookfield to service our generators, Program Number One for $22.60 if we pay for it by the 29th, which I believe we can do, and Program Two, the 904, if paid by the same date, which would do two services on the school generator.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, there's only one signature blank on this, so if, do you want to amend your motion to include who might want to sign it?
Sure, I think, board chair.
Okay. Any just further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the generator service for Brookfield Service, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you.
And I believe, Mary, that money comes out of the emergency management line item in the general, that's where we usually take it from.
Correct.
Yes.
That's good to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Number six is just information on a grant opportunity, Barbara sent it to me, I, this one didn't come to me, Barbara sent it over to me, so there's some grants, opportunities that are upcoming, just some, an overview of that, if we wanted to, to look into that for the future. As part of old business, we have the new budget sheets out, so I sent all the department heads and all the board members, the updated versions of the budget sheet, so we can go over that later. And for JP Sidewalk, I reached out to the person that was the contact, they apologized for not getting back to me. Byron and I were approved as co-municipal project managers, and the next step, we, we need to select a consultant to help us with this, they have two different processes, one where they have a list of pre-approved ones we can choose from, there are six on the list, or we can go out and source our own. In reading the requirements for sourcing our own, I think we should go with their pre-approved list, but that'd be something Highway Committee to, to do, I, I think that'd be the, be the best place for that to go, so I've added that to their committee agenda items. So, that's up to us, the next steps are up to us on that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anything further for you, Bill?
That's everything for me.
All right, thank you.
Mary, I have a question for Bill, if you would.
Sure.
Earlier on in the year, I had brought up to the board about checking with a firm that was doing the preliminary survey work and getting a lot of stuff done on that connector road from the Aldis Road through Ranberry Road and down through there. We were very close to receiving the final report from them and taking possession of their work and documents, and I know Bill, I think, looked into this a little bit, and then it's, I think this whole COVID thing, we've kind of fallen down on this, and I, because the town had approved the money to do this job, that first step, and then we bailed on it, we kind of wasted 80 or 85,000 of town money, and that, and that keeps nagging at me that we did that, and there was about 35,000 or 40,000 left in the highway budget to finish that first preliminary step, and I really think that we, we needed to find out if that could be done for that money. And I really think that we we needed to find out if that could be done for that money. I know that everybody's concerned about times are tough, but I I just feel really remiss in the fact that we wasted a bunch of money and didn't get the fi- final project. Not that the town has to build the road ourselves, but if we have that information, it would go a long ways toward eventually getting that road done. And I just wondered where we were or any closer to finding out if we could get that or if that company has just abandoned us.
I will follow up. I remember that conversation and I remember I had sent some message about that and I had gotten a let's look into this, but that was a while ago. And I will circle back and see what I can find out for you.
Okay. You know, it's just that I don't want to waste that money we spent. We really need that documentation for future reference in possible construction. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill, and thanks for bringing it up, Joe. Okay, any other questions for Bill? All right, if not, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I have about four things to talk about. I'll try to be brief about each one of them. I'm going to just start out with a reminder for all department heads or anyone who codes their bills. This is just a friendly reminder, honestly, that we are seeing a lot of checks come back, returned to us, or that bills are not being kind of looked at really carefully. The return checks often are duplicate payments. So just as a reminder, just go in your file and see if you've already paid something that maybe is in your in your mailbox. We keep everything right in the files behind my desk. And that because we got a a return check this time for something that wasn't even anything that our departments bought, but we paid it out. So someone reimbursed us. So I just wanted to give that as a reminder. And it it basically follows, we have had our auditors with us for a couple of days. They finished up yesterday and Andrew came this morning to show me a few things. The audit is almost complete and it has a few other things that it needs to go through processes, but that should be complete. Andrew's hoping by the end of the year, by the end of December, but definitely will be ready for our town report. So that's basically where the reminders also came from. You know, we're just looking at numbers really carefully. So that was number two. And number three is I just wanted to put it out there that in November around the eighteenth, we received our first lot payment, our one percent payment from the room room and the meals tax. And it was a great amount. We are definitely not short in that area. The amount was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and and some change. So that is on target. That's looking good. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about is a so I was invited last week to do a webinar slash like conference with the legislature. Brian Collamore invited me. It was a committee that he and some other people are in charge of talking about Town Meeting Day in March. And it's quite a big deal because we're still dealing with COVID. And by then, we are most likely still going to have this obstacle to work around, which means we have to think of a couple of things, but it's in the in the first stages of it. And I wanted to put it out there so people can start thinking about it. So with Town Meeting is obviously the election in March. What they were proposing is a three-part, three parts to a bill that they are hoping to get passed because most likely it'll be another option of mail-in votes again. And that again is not, I want to make this clear, that it's not going to be mandatory from the state this time for March, but it will be up to the Select Board in each town to decide if they wanted to solely just mail in the absentee ballots or do a combination. And so that was part of the bill, but also part of the bill was if the to give the towns opportunity to move the March Town Meeting Day. And that is because if there are certain towns that wish to do solely mail-in ballots again, kind of like the general one in in November that we just had, that we would need proper time to do so because it's such a lengthy process. And it would be on us to send those out on like November. And if we were to do that, obviously, I'm not saying we are, but if we were, it would have to be a process that started right now if we were going to keep the March Town Meeting Date because it's so lengthy. So the bill has that option in it. They want to have towns have the option to move their own town meeting date. It was a very lengthy meeting on Friday, so I did tap out after about an hour and a half to two hours, the third part of it. I missed, but I do have the follow-up email. And I told Bri- Brian Collamore that he he invited me. He wanted my opinion on how it went in August and November. And obviously, I have the point of view from our office where a lot of people have the point of view of keeping the taxpayers healthy, which is fantastic, but I wanted to weigh in on my point of view. So I told him that I would follow up with an email to him outlining some of the positive things that we saw and some of the things that could be changed or negative impact. So I wanted to put that out there for just us to start thinking about because not only due to the webinar, but I received a letter in the mail. I believe each town clerk in the state of Vermont received one from Governor Phil Scott. And it was quite a nice letter, obviously, to all of us with the amount of stuff that we went through with the change in elections. And he commended us on what we did and and how the results came out. But he wanted to put it out there that March will probably look a lot different, but yet the same as what we just went through. So I have that letter available in my office as well if you want to read that as well as the email that I have from Brian. So those are the four things that I had tonight. I know that was a little lengthy, but it was important information.
Good, good stuff, Carrie. Thank you. Do we know from Brian when a a bill might become a law on this alternative to Town Meeting?
Yeah, you know, they were talking about trying to get this going because I don't have a date here, but they wanted to do it as soon as possible just because of the time crunch. I don't have a date, but I can certainly ask him if something was determined at the end of that meeting or if he's heard anything.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good. It we will be coming up to a time when we will have to set the date for our pre-Town Meeting. I was reminded of that by, I think, Lynette Gallopo and maybe Bill too. And it's usually toward it's about the third week or so in January. And then, of course, that is likely going to be very different this year. We've got things to discuss with the school board about that.
Well, while we're talking about elections and clerk stuff, I I've been given some thought to how unhealthy are petition practices for office?
Yeah.
And I was wondering if maybe we shouldn't look into, I don't know, this might be a question for Kevin Brown, but I was kind of figuring, trying to figure out a system where we could approach folks, ask for their permission, and then make our own notation of the person's name, address, and telephone number and have that suffice, submit it that way rather than signatures. I don't know if that's, I mean, but if anybody had any question, you'd have the telephone number of the taxpayer and they could be called. There's a certain amount of trust, obviously, that goes in there, but I really don't think anybody's going to make up of names and and, you know, granting a petition. It's really, most folks are so accommodating in the request, I found anyway. But does anybody, does that make any sense to anybody?
I'm wondering if the the law that was passed that did away with requiring petitions for the legislative seats, whether that would apply to town elections or whether it could be made to apply. So that would solve the problem for at least the foreseeable future. But I think your suggestion is a good one, yeah.
Good idea.
All right, I'll look, I'll look into that. Should I, is that something that we, or Mary, would you ask Kevin that or do you want me to follow up? How should we go? I'd rather get a bought and paid for legal answer.
Okay, so why don't I ask Kevin?
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, is that something that we could get from the Secretary of State's office? Or would that just come from our own legal? I mean, kind of, don't the petitions for running, aren't they governed by state statutes and and the Secretary of State's office and stuff? So maybe they'd have an answer and wouldn't cost us anything.
Well, they that would answer maybe the question as to whether the petition requirement is dropped for this coming town meeting. But what JP is suggesting is something that attorneys can occasionally do on documents. So that's more of a legal question. So both answers are correct.
So, Mary, this is Carrie. Part of that webinar, and I'm not going to speak a lot to it because I don't want to say anything incorrectly, but they were discussing about digital signatures. And that's something we also could ask Brian or someone on that committee to 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 get clarity for, I guess, or a starting point, maybe.
Okay, I there were some laws that were passed allowing remote notarization. So I suspect they're thinking in that direction. But yeah, if you want to check with Brian
Sure.
about the digital signatures, and I'll check with Kevin. Okay?
Sounds good. Okay.
That sounds good.
Anything else for Carrie? All right, if not, Barbara Noys-Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Oh, wait a minute. Can I can I interrupt? I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a minute? Because I I took the opportunity to go on the Secretary of State's website.
Okay.
And pursuant to Act Ninety-two, due to the response to COVID nineteen, the requirements to file to run for local office in Vermont have changed for 2020, and no signatures are required to be filed. Candidates only need to file a consent form.
Great. Well, that's for 2020. People would be running in 2021.
Oh, that's true.
Oh.
That's true.
Yeah.
I'll say they say, wait, there's, okay, yeah.
Okay. Well, let's let's keep digging into this. There could be an answer there or there could be one forthcoming from the legislature.
Right.
Because we're not the only ones who are facing this. Okay, anything else for Carrie? If not, Barbara Noys-Pulling. What's her commission up to?
Yeah, well, just a really brief report tonight. You you asked last time for a visual or a map of that Thomas property and the archaeological site there. We haven't gotten that yet from Scott Dillon. So I'm not sure if that indicates he's sensitive about releasing that, but we can keep, we will keep trying. Another idea is maybe to have him come speak to the Select Board for a few minutes. And what he did with the planning commission, he just, he shared that that image just for a few minutes. And
Okay.
that was that. So I'll keep trying. If you want, if you want to schedule him for a chat, let me know.
Okay, good, thank you. And remind us again in a couple of weeks, maybe. Okay?
Okay. Yeah.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. Oh, before you start, I've got to say, I've got to compliment you. And Jim Hall and the crew that put together the Senior Luncheon Takeout today over at the pickup was at the Center Rutland Fire Station. And the food was very good and there was plenty of it. And I think we had, what, forty forty meals that were prepared and distributed. So thank you, Mike, for your efforts and thank Jim Hall. And Randy Roberts was in on that too, I think.
Yep, Byron helped out a great deal too. Provided the traffic cones and the and the feisty greetings to all of our drive-up customers. You basically stole what I was going to say. That's all I really had. The governor and sports were just waiting, obviously, to see how things go. We're ready to go as soon as we have the okay. So hopefully, we'll see something, you know, probably middle of January is kind of when I'm, I would expect that things will start to hopefully happen. But we're ready to go when 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 that happens and we'll keep you well advised on what's going on. Otherwise, I hope everybody has a great holiday season, even though we will be meeting briefly before the true major holiday. Other than that, it was great for the seniors today. It would have been great to have them in person, but they were very happy driving up. And Mary, thank you for out there in the cold. It was a little chilly chilly today, but it's a great thing that Jim has done and I'm just happy to be a little bit of a part of it. So thank you to all. Other than that, I don't I don't have anything else. Unless anybody has something for me.
Any questions with Mike?
No, thank you, Mike. Sorry I didn't make it, but we had some issues at work.
It's okay, it was yummy.
It was.
I tasted it when I got back. It was yummy, it was good. Byron, what I need to know if Byron thought it was okay?
Yeah.
Because he was, you know. I mean, how was it, Byron?
It was fine.
Okay.
Okay.
The beef was great. I didn't try the turkey. I'm not a turkey fan, but it all talked about it. So I ate the beef and the potatoes and it was all, it was great. I appreciate Mike Rowe offering the the variety this year. That was a great addition.
We will, we will continue. So thank you very much. If you got anything, just let me know, folks.
Okay, thanks. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner, since you're on, what's up?
Okay, just to let you know, I will order the arrow signs tomorrow morning. I will go out and wheel the edge of the road and measure up the approximate length of the guardrail and see if there's any of the companies that haven't shut down yet. And that might get done this fall if they haven't shut down yet. And I will get that done. As far as painting the stop bar and that sort of thing, we'll do that on the first warm day in April that comes along and we can get that done. For you tonight, I had, as of the last Select Board meeting, you had asked me, or at least JP had asked me, to extend a letter out to the private contractors, letting them know that it was kind of felt that it was their responsibility to see to it that there was an operator for their truck should they, in the event, take ill. So I crafted that letter for your approval. If you approve that, then I will send that out and get that taken care of. And then the other thing tonight are the bids for the engineering on the shared juice pack.
Okay.
So I would move to approve the letter?
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the letter to the contractors, the plowing contractors. Was there a second there? Sorry.
Yep.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And Byron, I, I got five of the eight so far on the basketball hoops.
Awesome. Hopefully next year, if the circle continues, then, you know, we'll get a, an article into the circle a little earlier and remind people of that, and hopefully that will, will, will take care of things, but that didn't happen.
Sure. Great.
Okay, um, since we're on it, the shared use path, we had two quotes, um, from two engineering companies, and Byron, do you wanna review those for us, please?
Sure, we had, uh, a bid, uh, from Otter Creek Engineering. Um, the specifications called for a not-to-exceed number. In other words, these companies can work at their normal hourly rates and fees and, and so forth, but, uh, not exceed a, uh, fixed number of their choosing. Otter Creek Engineering came in at, uh, I think it was an even, an even eighteen thousand dollars. Um, and then the other bid was from DuBois and King. Uh, they have a small office. They're a large company out of Randolph and Burlington, but they have a small office in, uh, Brandon, I think it is now. And their bid, uh, their not-to-exceed number was fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, active reviewing, um, in detail both bids. Um, my recommendation, uh, is for Otter Creek Engineering, um, because there are a couple of things on the DuBois and King bid that were not included, that will have to be included, and therefore, um, by their, um, by their bid would be extra money. Uh, and what that extra money would be, uh, who knows at this point? So my, uh, my, my recommendations for Otter Creek Engineering, uh, based on the fact that, uh, DuBois and King isn't quite complete.
Okay, any discussion or motion?
I would move that we, I would move that we accept the Otter Creek bid for eighteen thousand, um, based on the, uh, incomplete, uh, numbers from DuBois and King.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, and if not, um, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Uh, so Byron, oh, I guess this is one that, Bill, do you have, do I have something to sign?
I have, yeah. I have the originals, Mary, and I will leave those at the town office first thing in the morning for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. And then the last, the last thing I had, I, uh, emailed the, uh, a couple of grants, things out to you. Um, someone needs to be authorized to sign those. The, uh, one for Gleason Road is complete now. I did get the letter from, uh, letter of support from River Management, uh, so that is complete. Uh, I'm still waiting to hear back from the Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, so that's, that part of the, the money part of that grant application isn't quite complete yet.
Okay.
Um, so you can either authorize me, you can authorize the board chairman, you can authorize Bill. Uh, it doesn't matter who gets authorized, but someone needs to be authorized to sign the, the grant once I get it, uh, the money part all completed on the, uh, the, uh, the second grant application. One of the grants is for the Gleason Road cover. The other grant is to cover the cost of, uh, doing the road erosion inventory, which has to be upgraded every three years. Uh, we did ours in 2018, so we're due, uh, next year to have that, uh, completed.
Move the board authorize the chair to sign?
Second.
On both? Or do we wait on the one that we're waiting for the letter for?
You can sign them both when they come.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I seconded, Mary.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, further discussion? If not, all in favor of authorizing the chair to sign the, um, two grant proposals, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Uh, when those are complete, Mary, I will leave them at the town office for you to sign. They're not due, uh, until the eighteenth, so I'm hoping to have all my information by the end of the week, and then put all the polish on them, and I'll leave them at the town office. At that point, you sign them, I'll scan them, and then send them back in.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, other than that, that's all I had for you this evening.
Okay.
Um, Mary, I just had a kind of a thank you for Byron for overseeing the, uh, Water Main project down there on Ranberry Road. Um, I've had the opportunity to do some business down there, and I've been there quite a bit the last couple of weeks. Um, the only disappointing factor on that whole job is that the property owners along there can't seem to not drive their vehicles through the freshly, uh, put-down grass seed and popsoil, and they've rutted it all up, and I was very disappointed by their inconsideration.
Hmm.
Um, otherwise, it's a really nice job, and, and well done.
Uh, I haven't really recommended anybody sign off or issue final payments, um, because of the drainage in front of the Stowe Energy Building. Um, there's a puddle, a large puddle, uh, probably an inch and a half deep that forms every time we get a heavy rain. There's also another puddle that forms in front of the loading dock, um, between Stowe and the electric company. Um, and in talking with those people, uh, they've always had a puddle there, they've always had that issue, but the puddle now is much deeper than it was. And, uh, I met with Robert Clark down there, and we both agreed that there probably should be something done there. Uh, we came up with the idea of just running mill, um, up the new pavement and creating some type of a small swale to, uh, to, you know, alleviate some of that, uh, flooding that's there. But, uh, in talking with Robert today, he has talked with, uh, Masterson, and they're not in a hundred percent agreement with that, and they're just waiting now for some more data to be put together, some, somebody, uh, Otter Creek went down, shot some grades, and they're gonna see if they can come up with something different than, uh, just milling, uh, uh, swale in the, uh, in the existing asphalt.
Okay. Good enough, thank you, Byron.
Yeah, I did notice that puddle there today, Byron, when I was at Twin State, but I always, since I didn't know it didn't, you know, was what it was prior to that, but the rest of the project looked really good.
Yeah, the rest of the project is good, it's just that, that, we got two puddles there now where we only had one before.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Uh, good evening. I have, uh, really nothing to report. It's been a slow two weeks. Only two or three fire calls, and, uh, again, we're still not meeting on our normal nights. We're taking the time off for the Corona.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Chris.
Questions?
Chris, do you, yeah, I have a quick question, Mary. Sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay.
Uh, Chris, do you have a plan on how you will do, uh, election of officers? If, um, you don't have meetings in person, or would you make an exception for that one evening?
Uh, actually, uh, Mike Carlson and I talked about the, that the other day, and, uh, I was gonna bring it up to the fire committee and ask, uh, suggestions. You know, do we, can we have a meeting just for one day, or do we postpone it? You know, I don't really know.
No, you cannot. I can tell you, as a health officer, under the current guidelines, you cannot have the meeting.
Okay, so can we postpone it?
In person. If, can you set it up like we do on this, uh, Zoom thing?
Um, I'm sure I can, uh, ask Billy if we can. I have no idea. I don't know how we can vote like that, if we have to, you know.
You mean Billy from the IT section, right?
I do, yes.
Yeah. Um, yes. You would have a little bit of difficulty if you were trying to do, um, secret, you know, people voting, if you had multiple candidates for, uh, office. I don't know how you could do that, but maybe there is a way. Um, the other thought that I had was if the, if there's, I don't know if you can do a consensus of the firemen, either by email, if they would have any objections to just going with a slate of officers for another year.
That's a good idea.
And not really changing, I mean, if you, if it's a problem there, but usually, a lot of times, unless somebody is, you know, a lot of times guys get reelected, and, you know, it's occasionally somebody doesn't, but if the guy's in the interest of safety and good health and all that stuff, we're willing to just go another twelve months with the same crew, you might just wanna go with that, and, um, you know, we, we have to make some really big decisions under this really unique environment we're living in right now.
Yeah, correct. Uh, yeah, I can, I can do that. I can send an email out and get everybody's input, but I don't see much change anyway. Um, so I'll, I'll do that, I'll do the email, and then in two weeks, I'll let you know what we decided.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Chris. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right. Um, Ed Dumas, Ed.
The PD had to leave.
Yes, he did say, as he was headed out the door, that, um, he might not be back in time. Um, I do have a letter, a brief letter, um, and this is, Ed, I think Bill gave it to me. It's, uh, from Ed. It says, Rutland Town Select Board, on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, the Rutland Town Police Department applied for a cash grant through the United States Deputy Sheriff's Association. Applying for this grant was done specifically to help fund the creation of the K-9 unit. On twelve, one-twenty, the, um, Sheriff's Association contacted the Rutland Town Police Department, saying that they were awarding the police department a five-thousand-dollar cash grant to be used toward the creation of a K-9 unit. The grant has no match requirement and no timeline for use, and the Rutland Town Police Department would like to thank the United States Deputy Sheriff's Association for choosing our agency to give the cash grant to. Words cannot express how grateful we are, so. That's, uh, a very nice way to summarize the, the police report today. Anything else?
Um, Mary, if I could make a little comment, I know that, um, we had a letter presented to us, um, regarding the expenses and the costs of the K-9 program, and that our board had, uh, pretty much unanimously supported this project. And if there are folks out there in town that are questioning what we're doing or whatever, um, I would, I would like to say that by, uh, creating this position and having this dog, it is very similar to the Town Fire Department buying thermal imagers or rescue tools, or any other equipment that we buy that you hope you never have to use, but in the one time that you need them, you want to have them. So when people complain about the number of calls or the activity of this particular dog, I, I would think back to that. That dog only has to do its job once in its lifetime, and it's paid for itself, and, and that should dismiss anybody's concern about what it's gonna cost or whatever, because, um, when it comes to public safety, um, you know, there aren't a lot of, um, shortcomings to that. You, you always prepare for the worst, and you always hope for the best, and that you don't ever have to use this stuff. So I, I hope that, that people understand why we're moving forward with this project, and, you know, it's not always, always about money. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. All right, John Paul Fignant, Town Health Officer, what do you have for us?
So, as you know, the percentage of saturation is increasing in Vermont, like everywhere else. It's led to a revision of rules in space sharing, and unfortunately for the town office, uh, the rules now require anybody in the clerk's office, anytime there is two people or more in the clerk's office, masks must be worn by everyone. I explained to Susan and Carrie that that meant they had to wear masks when they were working in the office together. They understood. Um, but there's just no way around it, that it, it's clear we, it's the only way to meet the requirements. Uh, that's the, that's the only change that has the most direct impact on our town office. Byron's already implemented that in his town garage. He was ahead of me on that, but, uh, we've been doing it at the town office, and that includes all, you know, that includes, uh, clerk's office, the lister's office, Bill's office, the police department.
Okay, good.
That's all I have.
JP, um, do we have a supply of masks for our department heads and, or are they, uh, on their own to get those and make sure they're available, you know, so they, you know, I think that mask should be changed fairly frequently where guys are together all the time, where girls are together all the time. Um, so do we have a plan for that, or has that already been implemented?
So Sharon, Sharon had earl, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sharon.
I, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that you had offered earlier, um, that you had some masks, and so I was gonna be getting with Sharon to take advantage of that, Joe, both for the town office and any other agency that needs it in the town.
You know, I, I do believe that, um, masks should be changed frequently if they're non-washable, you know. I, I don't know what Byron's doing, if they change them every day, or once a week, or how they do it, or if they have their own and they have a couple, and they wash one and work the other, but, um, I, I just wanna make sure that our, our employees and the people they come in contact with have all the, whatever they need, and, and the best of whatever they need.
We received masks. We, we received masks from emergency management.
Okay, so Bill, was that you?
Yeah, we, we received masks from Emergency Management. I probably, I probably have six or seven hundred packages of five masks left. Um, I've advertised them on Facebook online, and we have received very little interest in, in them, so if, or is any need for masks, we have cloth masks available for anybody that needs them.
Good.
Okay. Well, Byron, is Byron still on? Byron, how are you guys doing, and what are you doing with your masks?
Uh, each of one of my guys, including myself, we have our own personal mask. Um, everybody takes their men's home, they wash them, they take care of them, and that way they have a mask that they like, that they, that fits well, that they're comfortable with. Um, my wife and I keep, uh, anywhere from six or eight masks, uh, washed and cleaned and sanitized at all times that we have. We keep one spare in my truck. I always have one in the pocket with me, um, and that's how we're handling it. I did pick up a couple of packages from Bill, uh, right after he first received those from Emergency Management, and placed them on the table in the break room, so that if somebody forgets one, um, we've got one. In fact, I used one the other day, uh, when I cleaned the furnace, because, uh, you know, I, my personal mask was gonna get quite dusty, so I used that one. When I got done, I washed it, hung it up to get to dry. So my guys are doing their thing, and, uh, uh, I'm, I'm surprised, because once in a while, one of my employees will grumble a little about, you know, it's not, can't be any worse than the regular flu and, you know, those kinds of statements, but, uh, uh, he's wearing his mask, and he's, he's following all the protocols.
Bye. If you need any paper masks, I have plenty of them, and if you let me know, I'd bring them home and drop them off for you.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, committee meeting updates. Were, did any of our committees meet? Um, I will say that at four thirty today, we had a brief meeting of the Personnel Committee. We had the Select Board as a whole sitting as the Personnel Committee, um, to consider an issue. There was no action taken at the end of that meeting. Any other committee meetings? Nope, okay. You have Bill's list, and we've had assignments that came out of tonight's meeting, so I expect there might be some more committee meetings coming up soon. Um, project list, well, we took, uh, a big step toward the, uh, shared use path, so that's good tonight. And, um, any other project that anyone wants to comment on, update?
Mary, have you officially taken the Ranberry Road wa, water line off the project list?
There is a red line through it and a check mark right after it, so I'd say yes.
Very good. That, that's something, you know, we've been working on it for quite a while, and, and- a while and, and I'm glad that that's done.
Yes. Yeah. Um, also, I will say, the other things that were scratched off were the Town Hall Crosswalk, which is here. Um, the state has finished their paving work and they installed the crosswalk for us and they signed it. Uh, not signed it, but they, um, put the, um, markings on. And also crossed off the list are expanding the Northwood Park Trails. So, um, and I've been on them and, and they're very nice. So, yeah, isn't it nice? We're, we're crossing things off. I should also read to you folks, um, also in red pen on our whiteboard, "Thank you to my Rutland Town friends. I will miss you all and hope to make you proud in Montpelier. Be safe and happy holidays. JCT." Um, I think that's our former chair, don't you? Josh Turner.
You can read that handwriting?
Well, he printed. He was kind.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Okay.
Something I, something I did want to mention, as I think by now, most of the board probably knows, but the, uh, Harbor Freight Project is underway. Um, I've been by there quite a few times now and, uh, it appears to me they're really going fast and I think they're trying to get concrete in the ground, which if they do, um, I'm assuming that's going to be a steel frame building that they could work during the winter. But that looks like there's their objective is to get the site ready and get their concrete in the ground. But they've done a lot down there. If you haven't been down, you won't recognize the spot.
Yeah. Yeah. I've driven by it. So that's a sign of growth in Rutland Town. That's nice to see. Okay. Now, down under new business, there, there is one thing that we have not done and it wasn't, um, I didn't think to ask Bill to put it on, but we have not elected a clerk for the Select Board. Um, the clerk traditionally serves as chair when the chair is unavailable and-
I nominate Joe DiNardo.
Motion is- Motion is made and seconded, um, that Joe DiNardo should be clerk. Is there any discussion? Any heavy politicking that wants to happen here? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, no. So I'm going to vote to, um, I'm going to vote yes in favor of Joe DiNardo. So there you go. So congratulations, Joe. You're, you're our new clerk.
Okay. And I'll, uh, talk to you at some point what my, uh, responsibilities are and what I need to know.
Okay. Very good. All right. Under new business.
Madam Chair, could I say something?
Well, certainly.
I just want to recognize, I do believe that you, Madam Chair, are the first female to chair a Select Board in our dear town.
That-
So there's a little crack in that glass ceiling, isn't there?
I think that's, I think that's the case. Thank you, Sharon. Okay. Speaking of the Select Board, um, the article-
I suppose you want to vote next.
Well, I'll fill you in on the history later, okay? Um, the board to discuss filling the vacant Select Board seat. You know that with Josh Taranzini's resignation, we had an opening. Your Select Board, um, solicited, uh, letters of interest and we received them from four people. They included Paul Racine, Chris Howland, Aaron Jones, and Barbara Noyes-Pulling. And, uh, we had a special Select Board meeting, all in executive session. At six, uh, 5 o'clock this evening, we interviewed, uh, one at a time each of the candidates. And we, um, of course cannot make any motion in executive session, so I will ask the Select Board now if there is any motion to be made.
So I would, I would move that the Select Board appoint Aaron Jones to the position?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to appoint Aaron Jones to the vacant, um, seat on the Select Board. Any discussion? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Um, congratulations, Aaron. I think you're listening in. So from now on, you're going to get the packet and you're going to have to make these decisions with us. So, um, thank you for your interest, all of you. We really appreciate it and we're, we were very happy that so many people were interested in serving in our government. So thank you all. Okay. New business, item B, the board to discuss creating a depreciation account for the transfer station. And I know we have Larry Rabineri on. Uh, we have our transfer station committee, um, who would like to report on this proposal.
Hi, Mary. This is Larry.
Hi, Larry.
How are we doing tonight?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, thanks. Uh, we, I talked to the committee, Transfer Station Committee, and, uh, we came up with a plan that, uh, we do need some money set aside for up there for, uh, our, uh, compactors and our dumpsters and stuff. We came up with an idea of a $50,000 cap. As we could put, start off at an eighth of a cent and work up to the 50,000. Uh, a new compactor right now would cost me right around 40 grand. And I don't know if we have that over at Town Hall. I really don't. Uh, the only thing I have, the only problem I have is once I get to 50,000, if I spend, say, 40,000 on a new compactor, how does that kick back in again? You get my drift?
I'm not sure I do, but we had-
If we, if I, if I cap it at 50,000 and I get, get to 50,000, then I end up spending 40,000 for a new compactor. Does the depreciation start up again? So I get back up to 50,000?
Yeah.
I, I, I believe we would have to work language into the ballot item for March that would say that we are, you know, the, we're creating this account, um, similar to the fire and police and highway and rec. And, uh, um, because of the, we, we don't have the rolling changeover up there that we did. That's why we came up with the idea of capping it. Um, once the money is used down, then the depreciation amount would, would, it would kick back in again that, uh, you know, the, the eighth cent. Now, if that doesn't work out, then maybe we'd have to have some different language. Um, you know, I'm not sure exactly how it would be worded, but yes, to your question, Larry, would be that once the fund is worked, used up, then we would start collecting the eighth of a cent until it was brought back to its, um, normal, you know, that, that capped amount. If, if that's what the board's choice is, if they choose not to cap it, then it would work just like the other accounts.
Okay. Uh, do we know how much an eighth of a cent raises? It's a eighth of a cent on the, the tax rate?
Yeah.
I don't know, Mary. Uh,
Okay.
It all depends how you word it, from what I was told over there at Town Hall. It's all on how you word things. Because I guess the police did something and-
Yes. Well, yes.
That, that, that had, that had more to do with numbers than words. Right.
Yes.
Um, Byron, Byron, do you know what your account raises per year?
My hat sent raises about $40,000.
And you're getting, you're getting a half, you said?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. So, so under that amount, uh, an eighth of a cent would probably raise about $5,000 a year.
Okay.
So, so chances are it will never not be used because I think that with the age of the equipment up there, especially the, the boxes, um, we could be restarting to have to replace those on a pretty regular basis. It's possible that that could happen. So it would take 10 years for us to get to 50,000. And this is all new to everybody. Um, you know, we could word it differently. We could go away from the eighth of a cent and put in a fixed number and adjust that number to, um, whatever's needed. You know, that could be part of the ballot item. I, I, I just think we need to think about this so that we do it right the first time and, and it gets started, um, with the next fiscal year.
Okay. Um, so is there a motion that you want to make? Or do you want to do a little, how do you want to approach this now? But I'm looking to the Transfer Station Committee.
So I don't know. We get it authorized and go from there.
Okay.
Do you want to, JP, do you want to stick with the eighth of a cent? Or do you want to think about a, like a fixed amount, seven, you know, say $7,500 a year? Uh, you know, or any portion thereof to maintain $50,000 in that account? How does that read?
That sounded pretty good. Yeah.
So which one of those is the motion, please?
Um,
The one that Joey said.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, put on the March ballot, uh, requesting a $7,500 per year depreciation fund for the transfer station, um, not to exceed $50,000. Or, or maybe it would be better- It would, maybe it should be that it would be a maximum of 7,500 per year or any portion of to maintain 50,000 in the account.
Right. For purposes of, for purposes of maintenance and operation, correct?
Right. It's, it's a depreciation fund for the equipment. Yeah.
Yep. Got it.
Okay. Which is a little different.
Yeah. It's a creation of a depreciation fund on a fixed amount versus a cent amount. That way it, it'll just be what it is. It won't go up or down. I don't know how to make the exact, you know, the exact wording, but it would be a, a fixed amount depreciation fund to maintain that amount.
Yeah, we've got that wording somewhere, Joe. We could get our, our hands on it.
Okay. So the, the motion is to, um, put on the town March meeting ballot, um, a beginning of a depreciation fund, $75,000 per year.
Seven, 7,500.
7,500.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, that was bad. 7,500 per year, um, to build up to a maximum of $50,000. Um, and the rest of the wording is, as Bill will put it in the minutes, a motion made by JP, seconded by Joe. Any discussion?
Yes, Mary. Just one thing.
Okay.
When, when I hit the $50,000 and I spend money, how are we going to start that up again? So we don't have to go through this again.
You don't. It'll be part of the wording.
Okay.
It's a, it's a self-funding mech-
I agree with you guys.
There'll be a self, yeah, there'll be a self-funding mechanism in the wording that allows it to keep the 50,000 there on a rotating basis.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, folks.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mary, this is Carrie.
Hi, Carrie.
So, um, I just caution about the, um, wording as far as like, um, I hear what you're saying and what you guys want. Um, I have talked to John Watson, um, our banking guy. Um, I, I think, um, after you guys talked tonight and probably passed this motion, I just want to drop an email to him and get his idea of how to word it so that you guys get it the way that you want it, um, before the ballot gets printed. Um, because I do know that the wording, not necessarily the numbers, but the wording in the way it is, uh, makes a big deal on, on, on the actual amount that happens and what gets, um, calculated into the, uh, tax rate in the summertime.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, I, I don't know if you want to just generalize it or, um, you know, just say that this is what our-
We've got time to, you know, correct it before it goes to print. So we appreciate that offer to have another set of eyes look at it and make sure it does what we want.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, the motion is still there, um, to, for the 7,500 per year set aside? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. That's your Christmas present, remember?
No, you already gave me one, remember?
Right, right, right. Okay. Next year's Christmas present. Oh, is our, um, new unit up there?
Our new unit should be showing up any time, uh, within a week or so. So-
Okay.
When it comes, I'll let you know. I'll have a big red bow on it.
Yes, please. Thank you. All right. Any other business, new business to come before the board? Um, if not, we will move down to old business and this is, um, item A is to vote on approving the 2021, 2022 municipal budget. Um, you will notice that Bill sent around a revised budget. And the, the big change in this was to add, which we had not done before, was to add the revenues in a little more detail than we have had in the past. And first I want to ask the board, um, what their reaction was to that. I thought it brought a little more clarity to face. I think Bill and Sue worked on this, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, comments about that kind of a, a format, which is a little different than what we've done in the past?
Mary, I have a little trouble hearing you. The microphone's not picking you up when you look away.
Yeah, I was looking at my other laptop for the budget numbers. Okay. Um, comments from the board? Anybody have any preferences, one way or the other? Is anybody there?
Yeah.
So Susan and I did talk about this for, for quite a while. And the only way to give an accurate representation of the change in budgeting was to include the, was to include the income. Because before we were just, we were just reporting the change in the expenses. So for like general and things like that, we were only, this, we were only actually proposing the cha-, or, or advertising the change in the expenses without really accounting for any of the income. But out of this actually came some interesting things, like when we put in anticipated income in some of the, uh, departments, and if Mike Ro, Mike Rowe still there, I'll pick on Mike Rowe. But year over year, we have $30,000 anticipated income. But in 2019, 2020, we only received $14,000 in income. So this, this gives a more detailed look at what we're actually taking in, in comparison to what we are budgeting for taking in. Um, and, uh, in general, in the general acc- account, that, that number includes a local option tax. And obviously when we received almost a hu- almost 100,000 more than we anticipated, that, that very much affects that column. So we had some bigger income numbers than we anticipated in some, in some budgets and lower in others. But this kind of going forward is, is probably the way we should be doing it when we talk about an increase, increase or decrease in budget because it's the actual budget, income and expenses, not just expenses.
Yeah. Um, you'll recall up until this point, we've just put an item at the bottom, um, as anticipated revenues and then subtracted it out to come up with the net. And, and I will say this, the format that Bill and Susan came up with is, um, more like what you see, you know, non, in nonprofit and for-profit organizations, they, they start with the inca- anticipated income, uh, revenues, and then they go into expenses. So, um, you know, if, if, if we're not ready to vote on this, that's fine. Um, if this is an okay format, that's fine. Um, but let's have a little discussion about where we go with this.
Well, I, I, I do think that it is more transparent and for that reason, I would support it.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I, I, um, well, I'll be honest with you. I kind of either mi- uh, Yeah, I, well, I'll be honest with you, I kind of either misplaced or whatever that information from what Bill sent us and, and I didn't get to really look at it, but I understand the theory behind it. So I, I think that's a good way to go and I, and I like that way of going. It may be a better representation of what we're actually doing and I'm okay with it.
Okay. Sharon?
I'm fine, Mary.
Okay. Are you ready to vote on our proposed budget tonight?
Do we have a drum roll?
I'd prefer a motion, but we can go with the drum roll.
I move to approve the budget as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the budget as presented. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now this budget will be presented at pre-Town Meeting, which is the first airing it will get among the public, depending upon how we do pre-Town Meeting this year. And that's basically the last opportunity then we have to make any changes based upon what we hear from voters and taxpayers. And then we finalize the version immediately after that, so it can be printed in the Town Report and presented to the voters on Town Meeting Day. That's the process for that. Okay.
Mary, Mary, I think that because this pre-Town Meeting in January is going to be a challenge, we should probably start thinking about how we're going to present this to the public, these budgets, and I don't know, I mean, not a lot of people show up for the municipal budget, a few more show up for the school budget, but it sounds like to me that we may or may not be able to do this in person. I don't know, JP would be the one more able to tell us how many people we could have in the same place at the same time. And I'm a real firm believer in none, but I, I think there are some rules, I think we really need to start now as to how we're going to do this because it's going to be very, very different.
Yeah.
Joey, we're also, according to the Health Department, you know, January through March and April are going to be pretty dismal. So the rules are in change, they're going to be changing as we go forward. What, what the rules are now are sure, are sure to be different in February and March.
Would it work?
If you... Okay, I was going to say, I've spoken very briefly with Lynette Gallopp of the School Board and it occurs to me, we should put our heads together with the School Board because they, you know, they present part of the, a big part of the budget. And maybe with our Town Moderator and see what we can set up for technology, a Zoom meeting or something else that would, and as we're doing it, be able to post the pages of the budget so that we, they would be in front of people as we were explaining that. I mean, it's what the school does with their budget. We have tended to use paper handouts, but I think we could all shift to a format like that that would work. And then the other question would be, of course, does it comply with whatever statutory requirements they, there might be? So, well, with your permission, I'll explore that a little further with Lynette and the school and our Town Moderator.
Okay, I guess an avenue that, that I would think, and I, and I think it's not going to be really cost-effective, is, is to mail copies to the voters, which is probably the most expensive avenue to go, but, but I, I don't know if we should look at that, you know, everybody would kind of get that pile of paperwork you would pick up at the Town Meeting and send it to everybody. But electronically would be definitely less expensive, but I just don't know how to get it out there to everyone.
We could post the budget sheets on our website, we can post them on Facebook and we can, I can share, we do the Zoom meeting, I can share screens of people logging in on a tablet or computer can look at it in real time.
Good.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think we're going to have to get a little creative here and I would like to do creativity in the most economical fashion for us, so that the word gets out there but doesn't, you know, kill us. Because we didn't anticipate, you know, like this mailing or the postage and all that, so there isn't probably funds out there to do it, but those are some options. And I like, I like Billy's can-do attitude, so I'm all ears.
Okay, all right, let's put our heads together on that one, thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before the Select Board tonight?
Move to adjourn.
That's the one I was looking for. Motion's made and seconded to adjourn, non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Good night, everyone, thanks for participating.